I like fantasy.
Good to go. All right. I am going to call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. We'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And before we forget, we have Mr. Baker joining us via Zoom. So, Mr. Baker, if you could just state your name, your location, and if there's anyone in the room with you?
Yeah, Jim Baker. I'm in Chilmark, Mass. in a private home. And there's no one in the room with me, but there could be someone walking in and out on occasion.
Thank you. Do I have action on the minutes from August 17th, 2022? I make a motion to approve. Second? Hey, you can you can choose Tammy or Maura. They both said it. Right. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Fabulous. Okay, as soon as I get through these manifest documents, I will pass them all around. Tom, you have some nominations.
Yes, I do. Just wanted to take a moment to nominate Kyra Butts. She's an in-step teacher. She was funded by the combination of two paras at the Bakey School. Hammer, grade one, one-year position at the Bakey School. Christine Marks, in-step teacher funded by the combination of two paras at the Bakey School. Kaitlyn Pagnataro, pre-K teacher at the Bakey School. And Holly Street, kindergarten teacher at the Bakey School that was funded by the Esser Funds that we allocated this spring. The Memorial School, we wanted to nominate Frank Dell Medico, special education teacher, and Kristen Shepherd, science teacher at the middle school.
Make a motion to approve. Second. All right. Roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick? In favor. Resignations.
One, Amber Miller, school counselor from the high school.
I make a motion to accept with regret.
Second. Thank you. Roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone for a very smooth opening to the new school year. We did all of our, as I said in my Facebook post today, all of our traffic patterns have finally started to slow down and settle in, except at the high school and middle school. We seem to have a lot of folks still dropping off students. So, we sent out a revised plan for the drop-off in the morning for the high school and middle school, and that plan includes that we're asking families to to drop, if you're dropping off a child to the middle school or the high school, please do so between 6:55 and 7:00. And we're going to have you drive around behind the back of the school, and middle school students will be dropped off so that they can walk straight into the cafeteria. And then you'll come around to the other side of the school, and you'll be able to drop students off for the high school and then exit the property so that the buses and the student drivers can enter smoothly throughout the rest of the morning. We also wanted to just note that things have been off to a very smooth start with regard to the sixth grade being at the at the the middle school this year. I did speak with Mr. Dawson, and I have some information for you all here. Mr. Dawson said that he is very excited to announce that we are up by 35 student athletes this year. So, 35 more kids are participating in sports, and those 35 students are from sixth grade. So, it's a very positive. All in all, Mr. Malilla tells me that things are running very smooth with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade being together. It's been a great start to the year. I've been in the building, all three buildings regularly, and I've seen that myself. Mr. Dawson just wanted me to mention that all of the five middle school teams are running. Cheerleading, girls' boys soccer separately, field hockey, and cross-country. And last year, we only had 14 combined soccer players and smaller rosters on every other team. So, it's made a huge difference. I do think it's important to note that one of the other positives of that decision was an unanticipated positive, but I think it's important to mention it as we go into the budget season. The Bakey School has had a little bit of an uptick in numbers. So, currently, the I'll do the enrollment update in the beginning of October when we do the October 1st numbers, but they're at over 100 in first in kindergarten right now, which is very positive. More students is always a good thing, but they have room for those students because the third grade moved to Memorial. So, that was an unanticipated positive. Oh, and Mr. Dawson also sent me one other note for you all. The girls' soccer just beat Dairy Field School. It was a big win for them, three to one.
Middle school or high school?
Oh. It must have been high school. He didn't clarify. He just said.
Yeah, middle school just started practice this week.
Ah, okay, thanks, Tom. So, the the girls' soccer team beat Dairy Field, which Bob says again is a very big win for them. So, I just yay, yeah, golf clap. I just wanted to also say thanks to the folks that are working really hard in the buildings. This is the first opening of school that has felt normal in almost three years. It really has been fantastic. We have we have kids are in school, settled, it's relatively calm, and it's fantastic. So, I just wanted to thank our staff, the teachers, the paras, the administrators, the the administrative assistants who we know really truly run the place, right? Because the those folks are on the front lines of the phone calls and the the tardies and the dismissals and everything. So, it's been fantastic. So, I just wanted to thank you all for a great opening to school. And that concludes my report.
Great. We move on to committee reports. I guess if you have a report, you want to just all right, so with, did Jim? I missed it, forgot. Jim, did you have a report?
No.
Okay. Heather?
Yes, I have a I have our full report from our policy meeting on August 17th. In attendance was myself, Ms. Bashaw, Mr. Baker via remote, Mr. Angel, Mr. Rozia, and Superintendent Ambrose called the meeting to order at 5:20. Recognize remote member Jim Baker, asking him to identify his location and whether anyone was in the room. He stated where he was. We made a motion on the minutes for 6:122. Ms. Bashaw made a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Baker, no discussion. We discussed the five policies that we approved at the last meeting. J I C J, cell phone, electronic devices. B E D H, public participation at board meetings. I K B R, homework guidelines. I L B A A, high school graduation competencies, and I K, earning of credit. Those were all moved to the meeting that night, and we met. And our next meeting was was supposed to be today, but it was canceled, and we will let you know when it was rescheduled for.
Great, thank you. All right, and then Jamie, you had our report.
Yeah, we had a finance committee meeting today. Went through a number of items. I'm not going to go through the full report about next time, but we did talk about the withdrawal from the CRF funds for energy needs, and we'll talk about that. It's on the agenda here, so I won't get into those details. But I did want to read through the budget transfers. I'm supposed to, and I do report that out as soon as I have that information. So, there's a number of special education budget transfers. The special education budget transfers are all within the special education budget. Nothing coming from inside or going outside of the special education budget. It's within line items. So, we have 106,964 coming out of the tuition non-public special education and going to other professional services to reallocate funds to cover the cost of services for visually and hearing impaired persons due to IEPs. We have a total of $129,000, $364 going into the other professional services speech, coming out of different schools, other professional services speech to match them up to where the students are. We have $170,706 coming out of or coming into tuition non-public special ed, coming out of tuition out-of-state special ed, student transport special ed, and tuition non-public special ed from a different school. And we have tuition, 12,242 tuition non-public special ed being decreased and tuition in-state special ed being increased. And finally, $45,000 coming out of tuition out-of-state special ed, tuition in-state special ed. All of these are to line up the special ed line items to the students and what the buildings are in and the different means that we're using to deliver those services to them, all within the special education budget. And that was approved by the finance committee and unanimous vote.
All right. I don't think there were any other. I, you have one?
Yeah.
Great, Maura.
The Personnel Committee. All right, the Personnel Committee met on August 17th. In attendance, Jim Baker remotely, myself, Tammy Mahoney, Human Resource Director Diana Rooney, Superintendent Ambrose, and Business Administrator Matt Angel. Matt called the meeting to order. Ms. Mahoney made a motion to nominate myself as a chairperson, seconded by Mr. Baker. All were in favor. Review, we reviewed the minutes of the 216 meeting. There's a little discretion on that because some of us weren't on the board at the time, but after some discussion, we decided to go ahead with approving them, and then we set our goals for the year. The goals for this year of the committee are to analyze potential action steps to help with staff retention, get regular updates on the Marshall evaluation and on evaluations for other employees, and to approve more job descriptions. Last year, the committee did about 20 to 25 job descriptions. So, hopefully, this year we'll do about that many as well. I'm sorry. Actually, I think I read the goals wrong. That was actually Mr. Ambrose's goals. I think I read that wrong. So, what the what the what the what the chair did approve on, made a motion to approve the Personal Committee goals for the 2022-23 year were staff retention, quarterly updates on the Marshall evaluation and other evaluations, and approve more job descriptions. Yes, same thing. And all were in favor of that, and the meeting was adjourned. We were going to have one today. It was postponed, so there was not one today.
Thank you. Jamie, did you say?
Yeah, I forgot about the Budget Committee. We had a Budget Committee meeting on the 25th of August in which the Business Administrator, Mr. Angel, provided us with a PowerPoint presentation as to the status of business in the district, as to what reports are generated, what historical data exists, the DO 2025, the MS 25. It stepped us through numerous aspects of that and generated discussions as to where the money's coming from, where it's going to, how it comes out of different funds, what what funds it goes into, how it flows through the expenditures sections. And so, we had a good, long discussion, I think about an hour and a half, almost two hours. They went very well. It was fully participating. Everybody was fully participating and very educational.
Thanks, Matt.
It was great.
All right. We will now move on to Student Council Representative Report. JJ?
So, students are really excited to be back in school, even though they won't admit it because they're excited for work to begin on the school year. A bunch of new electives were introduced this year, so students are excited to do work in those. Some examples of those, brain and behavior. I know a lot of students are really excited about that, and the teacher that's teaching that is very excited to teach it. And students are also very excited for the upcoming homecoming competition. Just as a recap, I've said this before, but the seniors are jungle, their themes are jungle, juniors are ocean, sophomores are tundra, and freshmen recently chose savanna as their biome. We, the Student Council, just recently, this week and last week, decided on the activities, finalize sports, and finalize Spirit Day selection. And the last thing I have, Student Council is in the initial steps of planning our annual Camp Lincoln trip that we all go to Camp Lincoln, and we host the Southern Tier of the New Hampshire Association of Student Councils, which includes schools like Winnicott and other schools in our area. So, and we host all of their student councils. We have a great day of team-building activities. We host lunch for everyone, and we have a great time there.
All right. First, public comment. All right, looks like they're all good.
Okay. Nobody's jumping up, and I got thumbs up, so I think we're okay.
All right, so we will move on to new business. Actually, I can't move on to that yet because we are scheduled. That's the public hearing. So, let's move on to school board goals.
All right. So, annually, the school board sets goals, and we're a little bit behind this year because of everything that was going on in the spring. And so, it's kind of an open discussion. Some of the things that that I encourage folks to consider is that the district is engaged. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you all hear me? Okay. The school district is engaged in a very intense process of NIASC accreditation. So, that is something to consider as as a goal, is successfully completing the NIASC accreditation. Another important goal is to continue the rollout of the new grading program and to finish that work of the three through five that the board voted on for this year to to look at and finish. Another thing that the district is working on is related to the scope and sequence of the curriculum, the common assessments of the curriculum, and then the intervention program that we're utilizing. So, we are very, very busy. The strategic plan outlines a lot of the things that we would have normally set in goals, but this is kind of an open, open conversation for for everybody this evening.
Like to
Well, I just point of order, I guess. Do you want suggestions or motions? How do you want to proceed?
I think we could have a open discussion, and then, you know, from there, we can decide on a motion unless you have something.
Well, I've got a couple of items that I would like to introduce as things that we should have as goals. They're pretty much in line with what Superintendent Ambrose just said. One is a goal for the fully implementation of the new grading system, which was a zero to 100 with letter grades for three to five, and finalizing the grading system for grades one to two for the start of 2024, because we haven't addressed that. Really, K to pre-K to two, what exactly are we going to do there? We said that needs some more discussion, but I don't think we should leave that hanging. We should have some way to tie that into what we're doing with the other grades. So, that'd be one of my recommendations. The other one was, it talks to two of the points that the superintendent made, which is NIASC accreditation and curriculum. But I would frame it differently, and that'd be quarterly reviews of the status and the progress of those items in the strategic plan, which include the curriculum updating and the NIASC. But there's also other things in there, and if we're going to really make the strategic plan be a living, breathing plan and not a shelf plan, then we should have a regular reviews of that as to the progress of those, and that progress has to be, where do we stand on doing the things within it that were defined for year one, which include in year one, a lot of the work on the curriculum and on the NIASC accreditation. So, those are my two thoughts that they tie into what we were working on before that we haven't completed yet, and it makes the strategic plan a living document to make sure that the work that was put into it isn't lost and just gets dusty and moldy on a shelf, that we use that continually, update that, revise that, and make that a living, breathing, driving document to get us where we need to be as a district.
It's like an IEP where you get quarterly reports.
I also would like some sort of goal. You know, we have the System of Care Grant that we had voted in, and I've heard really nothing about what they're working on, what they're doing. I'd like to have some sort of district goal about what is the System Care Grant doing in regards to community mental health and access to services for the students in our the students and the staff in our community.
I just would say that that's complicated because the state has reduced the funding.
Okay.
And they did it in August with no notice, so we need to give you an update on that.
Okay.
We do still have the coordinator, but they reduced the money for the social worker.
Okay.
So, we are working on that as we speak, and we will be happy to give you an update, but I'm not sure that it would be a school board goal. It would be more just a regular
Okay.
of our update to use.
Okay. Anybody else? Jim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to discuss a fiscal goal. I think it's very important that we don't deplete the capital reserve and trust accounts. We've worked very hard to build those up. These accounts were explained to the public as being needed for emergencies, and that surpluses in budget should be lower once reserves reach a satisfactory level. I think it's also very important to control costs. We have able to make Fremont tuition more competitive with other options. And it's very important to build community support by not only implementing the new grading system and strategic plan, but also by not overburdening taxpayers. So, my goal would be to exercise fiscal restraint to ensure that we are able to operate the district within the existing budget, notwithstanding the inflationary pressures that we're facing, and by carefully examining and balancing the cost benefit of proposed large expenditures with need anticipated revenues.
Maura?
I don't have a problem with any of these. These are these are great and all. Being nude, I shouldn't say nude, because I guess I was part of this last year when we came up with goals. I don't know how you put it, and it probably just sounds really fluffy and everything, but one thing that I would like to see, and I don't really know if you can make it a goal, is for us to just become a community again, and for us to, we have the smooth transition, like almost just kind of be for a moment, like we have things up and running. We have staff for doing these things. I don't know if it's appreciation for what we do have, or I don't know how to put that really quite into words, and maybe it's not a goal, but I guess that's just personally what I would like to see this year is that we can kind of go back to how things were before COVID, or even, you know, five years before COVID or whatnot. I've heard a lot from staff or parents about, let's get back into the schools. We we want to be, we want to be part again. And I just don't know how we do that from a school board level, and I get it's kind of a fluffy thing. I'm not really into fluffy things, but it's
Sounds like you're thinking about community partnerships, and we talked about that.
Yeah, so that's just and maybe that's, maybe you made it not fluffy for me. Thank you. Rick? You have better words for that?
I'm just going to say, yeah, I mean, I heard everything, but teachers and every suggestion so far. So, we definitely, what you're saying is
Yeah, I think that
between the school board and the community to improve the retention of our staff.
If I could, my proposal of the strategic plan within that is teacher retention, teacher professional development. There's a whole section on that, on community also. So, the strategic plan does incorporate those pieces. I highlighted the two pieces that the superintendent had mentioned, which was the curriculum and NIASC, but the the plan does have all those segments in it.
Anybody else have anything?
I would just like to mention that I would like to correct my previous statement and own that I probably left out something very important. We are actively engaging in working to improve the culture of the district. The administrative team at their retreat this summer had a lot of conversations, reading and training about how to improve culture. And we recognize that teacher retention is linked to culture, but most importantly, student outcomes is linked to culture. And I would agree with Mr. Edelman that that's a community, a community. It takes a community to do this.
It's a community goal.
It's a community goal. It's not just a board goal. It's not my goal. It's not my administrative team's goal. It's our goal.
So, to increase community partnerships, to increase the efficacy of the district and the culture within the community that we live in.
That's very well said.
Sorry.
Yep.
Is that fluffy?
Yeah.
I thought it was loaded, but I know what you meant by all that. So, I, you know. Yeah.
And also, and I didn't want to say anything on your super tense report, but I just, I want to acknowledge all that the staff, be it administrative or paras or teachers, all that everyone did over the summer to come together, and I'm just really excited about this year. I personally have a sixth and a seventh grader in the middle school in this new transition, and it's like I'm really happy. So, I guess that's just for a moment. If maybe that's all it is, I think we should just celebrate that we've, where we are, and I just thank you to everybody who made that this work because it's really
Yeah.
my kids are having a great year so far.
I've heard so many great.
So, thank you to everyone who was involved in that.
On behalf of the staff, I'll say you're welcome. Truly. And it has been the second most challenging summer of my career of 23 years. The only other summer that was more challenging was 2020. So, so we appreciate that you see that. And I think more, what you're saying is there's balance. How do you balance enjoying what's going well?
Right.
With also striving?
Right, because sometimes you're looking so far at your goal that you're not appreciating the moment that you're in, and I'm not saying we need to stop. And I have no problem with 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 these goals, but I just think at some moment we should stop and just be like, this is, this is really good. We have a good thing going, and we're heading in the right direction. I really feel very positive about the direction that we're heading in. It's going to have bumps in the road, but I feel good about it.
Does does anyone have a problem with 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 having the NIASC accreditation be a two-year goal, because it is a two-year goal, and it's very important because it's linked to many, many things? And then have the second goal be to implement strategic plan and check on in on it regularly because it covers all these things. Maybe we need to give the message to the community and the staff that our goal right now is to work on these things together. Maybe that's the goal.
Yeah.
That's my goal. I don't, y'all do what you want. I know what I'm doing, right? I know what I'm focused on. Right? I I went to the Student Council and listened to them about, it was awesome. So, I just, I would like to be in the schools a lot. I want to be with the teachers and the kids. Three years of my life in an office, dealing with lawyers, masking, and trying to keep the school staff so that we could be open. I just want to see people this year, please, besides Jamie.
And without me in your ear?
No, no, it's I'm just saying, like, it's fun to see the kids. Like, it's been great this already. It's been two weeks, and I spent half the day at the high school today. It wasn't totally fun, but I could do it, right? And that's what we all want to do. We want to be together and figure out how to be together and work this out.
Jamie?
I was just going to say, I think the more concrete we get and measure, you know, I think our goals should be measurable. I like the suggestion of implementing this or implementing the strategic plan and reviewing it and monitoring it
quarterly.
on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Because that feels measurable and tangible to me. But I like everything that everyone else has said for sure.
Yeah.
You know, we talked in our Public Relations Committee meeting about some, you know, staff engagement at least. So.
And I agree. I think, you know, when we set our goals, they need to be measurable so we know if we've met them or not. So, I think for me personally, bringing the community together, making sure everybody feels supported. I know all of you on the board know that that's a huge passion of mine. I know it's a huge passion of all of ours. So, I think, I don't know if it's a goal, because I don't know how you how you measure it specifically, but I think we need to at least make it a personal goal of each of ours to make sure that that stays at the top priority. So, we're working on all of this stuff, but that has to be at the forefront. So, we all have to continue to think, create new ideas of how how to be, you know, how to let everybody know that we appreciate them and support them, because I mean, sometimes it gets, you know, you do the same thing over and over, and it's like, they're just doing that because that's what they always do. You know, I encourage everyone to start thinking outside the box, to bring some ideas to, you know, bring the community together more, you know, and show appreciation in different ways than we have in the past. I think that's, I think that's really important.
So, go ahead.
You said, I thought we had one year for NIASC. We have two years to complete.
It's a long process.
Two years.
Okay. It's a big year. Our first visit is this November, and then the next visit is the next November. So, that could be a measurable two-year goal.
Okay.
Right? It is, it is a lot of work. And as Jamie said, he's right that NIASC, the strategic plan encompasses the curriculum components that I mentioned, but I was kind of trying to give you an idea of what we're focusing on at the central office.
Yeah.
Because Rick was right that that the 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 culture piece really is a bigger focus, and I need to be careful to say that. Do you know what I mean? I know I'm doing it. I know we're doing it, but I just want to correct myself that we need to say it, that that's important, and that's a goal. And Matt knows from all of our meetings that I, I've opened every meeting I've had since June with culture as our primary focus. How are we going to make our staff feel valued and supported? What are the actions we are going to take that embody the values that these people are important? What are you specifically doing, not just talking about it? Every meeting, we talk about. Uh, every meeting we, we talk about it.
So I hear, I hear three goals. I hear NIASC, I hear strategic plan, but I also hear culture. Cause I think strategic, yes, culture is part of strategic plan, but if it's that much of a focus of the administrations, then I think it should be part of the focus of the board too.
I'll, I'll take a little bit of a risk.
Okay.
I like to take risks. I would challenge the board to set a culture goal and report out quarterly on what you are doing.
Yeah.
To reach out to the people in the community and the staff. So for example, the public relations committee is going to be hosting a coffee cart at the schools with the board members walking coffee around to the teachers and snacks. Maybe we do something, we have quarterly report outs on that. It needs to be measurable. Tammy's right. But I think that we, we, I would challenge you, I, I just want you to know that you've done two things that have already made a huge difference. The people who showed up at the barbecue at the end of the year for the staff and just hung out and chit chat with them. And then the folks that showed up for the taco bar, I can't even tell you how much positive feedback I got from staff about just seeing board members. They just want to connect with you. They want to know that, that they're supported by you. It doesn't take a whole lot. So we could talk about ideas, but it should be a standing agenda item if we're going to do it. What, what are we doing to support the culture? Who's going to homecoming? Who's going to beach to beacon?
Reach the beach.
Reach the beach. I'm sorry. Maine. It's called beach to beach. Same concept. But, but I'm just saying who, who's attending what and what are we, or what are we doing for Kingston days as a district? Right? Let's talk about it. But let's be really public and transparent about it. I, I think it's a great idea.
So who wants to throw those into some motion? Yeah, Jim.
Um, I'd like to follow up on that. I think the NIASC goal is important. If it's a two-year goal, I think it should be included as far as the board's point of view in, uh, the, the second goal that Jamie expressed, which is to track, track the implementation. Uh, because it's not really the job of the school board to fulfill the NIASC accreditation. That's the job of the administration. It's our job to make sure everything's on target. And then as far as the community goes, we've gotten a lot of support over the past several years from the community in passing all our warrant articles, our, our employment contracts. I mean, that was huge support. And I think we need to show the community that we appreciate that and that we're serious about cost control and that being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. So I think, do think we need a goal about that. And it's also important for the reasons that I expressed, we do need to try to encourage Fremont to stay with us. If we lose them, that's going to be a huge thing and a big part of their decision is going to be fiscal. And then the other part is just staying within the budget, uh, not exceeding the budget. So I think we do need a fiscal goal for all those reasons.
I don't really have a problem having a fiscal goal of staying in the budget. I understand Jim's concerns. Um, and I, I don't think really any of us know it's going to happen in the school year in terms of pricing and with inflation and whatnot. So, um, I know Matt talked earlier in the finance meeting about doing a deeper dive into some of these things. So I think it, I mean, I would be, I'm, would be willing to say, yeah, our goal is to just be able to stay in budget. Maybe we need to rein it more than that, but I, I think that's a measurable goal. Were we able to keep on target with our budget? I, I think it could be a challenge this year versus some of the other years.
My comment on that would be legally, we have to stay within budget. So the question is, are you staying in budget and spending a hundred percent of the contingency fund and using all the money and all the trust funds? Or, and having no money to give back to the community at the end of the year? Or are you staying in budget and having full trust funds and giving back contingency money? So I think that there's a big distinction between those statements in my mind anyway.
I, I would just offer that some of those things may not be within our control.
Right.
Right.
I don't know. Right now.
With all of the, 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 I, I mean, we're going to talk about this and we have to move to the public hearing for a minute, but.
Seven o'clock.
Oh, it's seven. Oh, thanks. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Um, I, I, I think that, that it's really important to note that with the rising, so if eighty percent of our budget is pretty much fixed, approximately eighty percent is staff. The twenty percent that is, that is manipulatable is limited in its ability to be manipulated because we have to have heat, electricity. You, you, you can't, and those costs are going up dramatically. I am very nervous about what the oil is going to cost. I am. So I, I think that it's reasonable to say that, that, I, I mean, Jamie, you're right. We're not going to over expend the budget. Are, are we going to have to use some of the contingency funds that we've built up? We don't know yet. We're working on the numbers. We, we certainly will have a bigger update on that. Hopefully in two weeks. That's our plan. Um, do, do I think that we're, we have, we have had incredible, we have been incredibly successful at returning money to the taxpayers and keeping our contingency set for years. If there's a year that I'm concerned, it's this year. Inflation is serious. It really is. And, and, do I think we're going to be okay? Yeah. Cause I know Matt's got it, right? Like I trust Matt when it comes to those numbers and we work very closely. Do I think that we're going to have full contingency funds? I don't know right now. I mean, that's why we asked for the money last, last year at the end of the year, because we knew that we were going to need to fill some teaching. We have more enrollments at BAKI than, I mean, we're budgeting a year ahead. So we're budgeting right now for next September. I can't tell you who's going to move into our communities over the next 12 months. I might need two teachers at BAKI. For real, right now with the seated students, because the enrollments have gone up at BAKI. When you see the enrollments for October 1st, and trust me, I'm not complaining. I'm, I, kids are good, right? They're wonderful. I, I, I'd love to see BAKI growing. I'm not complaining at all, but it means that we have to look at that when we budget. So I don't know the answer to those things. And I don't know if they're within our control. That's all I'm saying. I, when I think about goals, I think about what can I do? Right? What can I do and control? And I'm not sure that inflation or enrollments are within our control. That's all I'm saying. There are other things that are, right? Do we, are Matt and I having a conversation about the possibility of having to freeze the budget? Yep. Right? Are we going to stop buying supplies and pencils and things? We might have to. Because it's that bad. We don't know yet. We're working on it. We'll know more next week. Um, but we are taking it very seriously. So I'm just throwing out there that this year is, we, we told everyone last year when we did the budget that we were worried about inflation and it's way worse than we thought it would be. If I missed anything, Matt, this would be your wheelhouse.
That's perfect. Okay.
It, can I make a comment too on the budget? Um, if I recall the new, there was an additional fund that we set up last year for the electricity, I believe. And I think that there was a lot of discussion, I think in the school board, but I also know on the budget committee, there was a lot of discussion about, I, I think we kind of already saw where electricity was going at that time. And we knew what was being budgeted was really not going to be enough. And Matt talked a lot about, um, the highs and the lows and not have, you know, we don't want to have these swings of, of years of taxes or whatnot. So I, I think we knew then that that was going to be a really real possibility that we're going to need to do that this year for the electricity. Not saying we should go and do free rein and just pull out every money that we have. I just, I think we need to be aware that it could happen.
Oil. Well, it's more of a concern than electricity. We use a lot of oil.
Yeah. Maybe it was oil or was it electricity fund that was the new one?
The electricity is locked in at a certain rate.
Okay.
It's the oil that we're really.
It was the oil. Okay. I knew that there was a lot of talk about that.
Thank you.
So just some financial points, and I made some of these points in the financial meeting, uh, earlier. So on the 22nd, we approved 194,000 of the 241,000 authorized to spend of the special education trust fund that depletes it by eighty percent. Unanticipated education expense fund, we approved and authorized 97 out of 200,000. So that depletes it by forty-eight percent. The resolving fund, we spent 94,000 of 260,000, which we depleted that by thirty-seven percent. That's already spent. The request that we'll talk about later is for seventy-four, nine ninety-nine of the seventy-five thousand in the energy trust fund, which would clean that trust fund out roughly a hundred percent dollar to keep it in. Last year's special expenditures, they shouldn't repeat, a quarter of a million dollars for the auditorium, fifteen thousand dollars for a basketball court, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for track, ninety thousand dollars for an office was authorized, although we found ways to make that come in much less. I think it came in around thirty. When you add all of these up and then you add to that, we also returned 1.175 million to the taxpayers. So in the past budget that we just, we, that we just had, those numbers I just listed up is two million dollars in spending. That'd be roughly four point, five point four percent of this year's thirty-seven million dollars. The contracts are already set for this year. So when you're setting a goal for this year, eighty percent of the budget is already set. Contracts is not subject to inflation this year.
That's right.
So I, I think it's reasonable, uh, particularly to the point that Mr. Baker made about Fremont. If, if you take your worst case scenario, and I don't think we're, we're near that, but just to demonstrate the point. The, the feds are announcing about an eight point five percent inflation rate. And then you got a question of is it core inflation? Is it not core inflation, et cetera? Some estimates in some Fed areas are saying it's double digits. So let's just take double digits. If we just went up in budget, which we're not going to by ten percent a year, that'd be the same thing as saying to Fremont, have a nice trip. I mean, I think it's very important that we make sure that we're cognizant of the impacts of the financial decisions that we're making because the implication of a Fremont leaving because we are not being tight with our money is severe. It's much more severe than a financial goal that we might be setting. So I just, I just want to put that in, in perspective with some hard numbers. Going back to Tammy's comment about we need to be able to measure things. That's just some, we've already authorized significant depletions of the trusts that we have now. Now it doesn't mean we're going to spend all that. We're taking efforts to not spend it. That's what the, the superintendent and the, the business administrator were just talking about potential freezing, et cetera. But that said, we've already authorized a whole lot of spending and already did a whole lot of spending. And, and we, we need to particularly in the face of what we're looking at in inflation, we, we need to be very tight with what we're doing. And, and I think it would be an appropriate goal out of the financial, a financial goal that's suggested by Mr. Baker. That said, I have a motion. But it's not on that. So, you know, I still think, so I understand the, the NIASC accreditation, but, and, and I'll take, uh, Mr. Edelman's spelled properly. I'll, I'll take Mr. Edelman's, uh, comments to heart. And, and I would, I would make a motion that we hold a quarterly, uh, review tracking the implementation of the strategic plan, which includes student achievement, teacher retention and satisfaction, community outreach and cultural improvement, curriculum improvement and NIASC accreditation. In that plan, it lists what we're going to do this year in all those areas. And then we, we, we monitor and implement them. And, but the motion would be with all of those listed. So I'm not short citing those other pieces that I didn't list before.
Can you say it one more time?
Yeah. So hold quarterly reviews tracking the implementation of the strategic plan, including student achievement, teacher retention, satisfaction, uh, and culture, community outreach, curriculum improvements and the ask accreditation.
I would add and finance.
Do we have a specific line, a specific section in the strategic plan on finance?
I think that, that I would add quarterly updates as Mr. Baker was saying, if we're going to set a goal of managing the budget responsibly, we should have a quarterly goal to review our expenditures are just added to the list because it, the reality is we need to. So we set the agenda for the board meeting, the first agenda will have two things and I'll invite Christine, right? And then the second agenda will have the other two things and Matt and I will speak about the budget. So.
If, if I could.
Yeah.
So I, I would not include that in my motion and for this reason only. It should be, it should be a separate motion. Yeah. Because this is specific to the strategic plan, and then we should be able to go into that plan and see those items in the plan. And then that becomes a talking point of what we're reviewing and. But I agree with you. We ought to do the exact same thing on the finance. What you're saying and what Mr. Baker was saying, but my motion is to the strategic plan piece of it. So that'd be my motion.
An actual motion?
Yes.
Second. Discussion.
I like it. I think if we break it up into those five areas.
I think there's five, yeah.
And like each board meeting, we kind of review to.
Hold ourselves accountable.
And hold ourselves accountable. I agree.
Yeah.
And then each committee, and they can tie into each committee too, because ISO would be academic, you know, PR would be community policy. You know, I just, I think we can also tie it back in. So it all, that golden thread for those that get that it's, it's all interconnected and all works together.
I was going to add that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. Um, I agree. I like it as well. I like the fact that it doesn't just say quarterly reports on NIASC. I like that it's broken down. So it's clear cut that we are talking about everything that's in there that, you know.
That was a fair point. I should have included that.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I like that.
Right without saying it?
It's in the minutes now. We're good.
And then I think when we write the goal, it's broken down like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
I'll, I'll type it up and send it to Phyllis.
Thank you.
And then do we want a second goal to monitor?
To vote on this.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
All right. Um, any other discussion? All right. We'll do roll call vote. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself. Yes. Maura? Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Unanimous. All right. You had another?
Yeah, I can, I can give the other one. Fully implement the new grading system, which was the zero to a hundred and letter grades to three, three to five, as we had already approved. And we're waiting feedback on that one. So the, this would read fully implement the new grading system, zero to a hundred and letter grades for three to five, and finalize a grading system for grades pre K to two for the start of school year 2024. I think that's actually in the, part of that is in the, it's good to make it explain too, because parents need to know.
Yeah, I, I agree.
They need to give input. If they don't, then the grading's going to change without their input and we want their input desperately. So we appreciate it when they come.
All right. Second.
Did anyone?
I was going to say. All right, Tammy. All right. Uh, discussion. All right. Uh, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself. Yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Fiscal goal.
I was going to say, do we want to?
Wants to propose. You want to propose that, Jim?
And what'd you say?
So again, we're concerned about inflation. The whole community's dealing with inflation. Not everybody has six-figure incomes. We need to be cognizant of that. We need to try to stay within our budget. So my proposed language is exercise fiscal restraint to ensure that we're able to operate the district within the existing budget. Notwithstanding the inflationary pressures that we are facing and by carefully examining and balancing the cost benefit of proposed large expenditures, we'd need an anticipated revenues.
And are we going to do quarterly reviews on that as well?
I think the reviews are in the finance committee monthly. But, um, yeah, I mean, the school, reviews for the school board would be great.
I need to hear it again.
Yeah. Could you read, could you read that again?
Which, which part?
The whole thing.
All of it.
Oh, the, the proposal? Okay. All right.
Can you stand up when you do it, please?
Yeah.
You want to make sure I've got, uh, no, nevermind. So can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Exercise fiscal restraint to ensure that we are able to operate the district within the existing budget. Notwithstanding the inflationary pressures that we are facing and by carefully examining and balancing the cost benefit of proposed large expenditures with need and anticipated revenues.
I mean, I'll second, second, anyway. Second, that was a motion, I think. Second, so discussion.
The only thing I, I just think we should add something about properly maintaining facilities. Running the districts, one thing, but we have facilities that we have to take care of. And I don't think that's in there anywhere.
I think that's in the strategic capital improvement and maintenance is in the strategic plan.
I didn't hear him mention the strategic plan.
Well, it's already in goal two. Well, it's already in goal two.
First goal.
Our goal one. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't enumerate that.
If we're gonna make a statement about being fiscal. And and operating the district, part of that operation, maintaining the buildings that the kids go and the teachers.
And and we, we do have a capital improvement plan that will come to the board soon through the facilities committee for approval as part of the strategic plan. But I think what Rick is saying is that I I would like us to define fiscally responsible. Because fiscally responsible, there's three different lenses. One is what are we, what do we anticipate we need? What do we currently need and have to expend? Jim, Jim brought those up very clearly. But the third one is what are future costs and what is the, the, the relationship of the risk to to not dealing with the problem right now? So we, we, we have a problem at Memorial with the portables. Those portables at Memorial are going to eventually fail. Is it better to plan now? And I think Jim, Jim touched on it, but he just didn't bring it out the way that you were, you know, like it's, Jim was saying like big expenditures, what is the benefit? Jim, what did you say in your language again? Because you did kind of touch on this.
Yeah, and this, I believe, covers that because all of these specifics go through either the finance committee or the facilities committee of these large expenditures, whether it's for maintaining facilities or whether it's some other area. So I just said, and this is a cost, this is what we do. So I'm putting it into words. We do cost benefit analysis before we recommend spending. So I'm saying the balance, balancing the cost benefit of proposed large expenditures we'd need and anticipated revenues. So not only are we looking at the cost benefit of proposed expenditures, but we're looking at where we're going to get the money from. Is it going to be from grants? Is it going to be from tuition? Is it going to be from taxpayers? What are the sources of the money? Is it going to be warrant article? That's all part of the anticipated revenues.
Matt?
My only concern is when I, when I listen to what he's saying is, is you have the operating budget and then requesting to stay with inside the operating budget except for in inflationary measures. The first two withdrawals of the, from the capital reserve funds related to increases in student population, which aren't correlated to inflation. So my concern is, is if we limit it to one factor such as inflation, it doesn't include a broader idea of the other things that are going on in the district.
Jim, could you reread the inflation statement?
Yeah, it doesn't say excluding or just.
You said notwithstanding.
Yeah, it's not withstanding the inflationary pressures. So if we have a situation where inflationary pressures are forcing us to spend more than we would like, that's included in that. It's not, it's not precluded.
If I could put it in layman's plain speak or people's terms, what I hear you saying, Jim, and I I'm just asking for clarity myself so I can articulate this to the community later. What I'm hearing you say is we're setting a goal of being really careful with the money because we've had to spend a lot lately.
Well, yeah, but I I'd like to be a little more formal sounding than that.
Absolutely. I was just going for plain speak just so that I understood.
Because most folks that I talk.
Don't, they don't, they just want me to tell them what, what, what are y'all doing about the spending?
Right.
A more, it's too wordy for me. May, maybe I get we want to sell a more formal than that, but it's just, I mean, we had to have you repeat it back five times because we couldn't.
It sounds like a run-on sentence.
Catch it. Because I'm, I'm I certainly can.
Okay, how about, how about this? Exercise fiscal restraint to ensure that we're able to operate the district within the existing budget and carefully examine and balance the cost benefit of proposed large expenditures we'd need and anticipated revenues. I mean, that's what we have to do under the RSA.
That's better.
I like that.
Yeah, I think that's better. All right, are you, so are you amending your motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll restate it. Exercise fiscal restraint to ensure that we are able to operate the district within the existing budget by carefully examining and balancing the cost benefit of proposed large expenditures we'd need and anticipated revenues.
Can you repeat it again?
You got it, Rick, didn't you? You're about cost benefit. I know you got that.
So whatever, amend my second or. Oh, yes. Whatever. Thank you. Procedural thing is. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And we have five minutes until we have to go to public hearing. So we're, we're doing well. All right, let's see what else. All right, I don't think we can really get any of these done in five minutes.
I think we can because we're going to, we're gonna put, we're, we're gonna, the withdrawal will take just one, a minute or two.
Okay, fine. So we'll move to seven point three withdrawal from capital reserve fund, Matt.
Okay, so I'm going to start off with a conclusion. I'm going to ask to have this tabled.
Okay.
Okay. But let me kind of give you the, the gist of what's going on. When we built the budget last year, we assumed a three dollar per gallon price of heating oil. Okay. We reduced that as part of the budget in exchange for putting money inside in a capital reserve fund. Now, what happened is, is oil came in at three dollars and seventy-seven point nine cents per gallon. So we are going to be over budget on heating oil. And we're gonna, we're gonna look at trying to make it fit with inside the budget. No, we're gonna come back.
Part of that bigger piece that we talked about earlier of analyzing all the different moving pieces before making any further recommendations. Because, and I do, did want to say that Mr. Fitzpatrick made an important point. We asked for authorization. I said important, not correct. Touche. No, I, I did, I did, I do think it's important to note, we asked for authorization to use some of these reserve funds, but we have not used them yet. We are trying to work within the existing budget first. And I, I, I don't know, we'll, we'll know more over the next two weeks. It was a very, very challenging hiring season. So the first goal was to get everything staffed and get people in the buildings and get them open. The second goal has been to get everyone in payroll properly and get the payroll running. And now the, the third goal is to analyze the budget and try to utilize the most efficient spending possible and we'll give you a report on that. Okay. And so this will play into that. If we get to the point through all that and we feel like it is getting tight, then we may need to use some of these funds for the oil, but we'd like to do a deeper look before we do, but we want it on everyone's radar.
Done? Done?
Yeah, hold on one second, Maura.
Okay, sure. Oh, sorry.
And maybe I didn't ask before, but can we go? Can we pay for the oil out of the regular operating budget? And then go back in June and transfer and be like, oh, no, just can't put that back.
Yeah, we can transfer it at any time.
We can transfer back in and say,
Yep.
No, we're gonna use the money that we are using on the oil. And, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Angel put this on the agenda and I spoke with him earlier today and, and the chair of the finance committee, and and I just explained to them that, that I, I even feel like I'd like to just see what happens because I want these reserve funds to stay where they are. We fought long and hard to get them where they are. And we really do have some enrollment issues. Baking needed another teacher. But if I can cover it through the budget, I'm going to. So what that, what does that mean? It means that at the end of the year, the amount of money that we give back might be lower. But the reserves funds would be maintained and that's really what we're supposed to do. So that's what I'm going to try to do.
Jim?
Yeah, this is for Matt. Matt, you had negotiated a recent price for the oil. Was that what it was? Three seventy-nine?
Three dollars, that's seven, seven, nine.
Seven, seven, nine. Okay. That's the recent number, the most recent number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just for clarification from Matt also. If you take money out of a trust fund, you can't put money back in from the general budget into the trust fund. Once it's out, it's out. And then you have to go back to the voters to refill that trust fund. Right. Just wanted to clarify that. That was correct.
Which is why I specifically worded the motion in, at the end of June to be to authorize us to utilize it, not to use it. You've authorized us, but we have not touched it yet.
Right, yeah.
Okay. This goes back to the part about, look, I've worked for five years to build the trust of this community to pass these contracts and budgets. I take it very, very seriously.
All right, it is seven o'clock, so we gotta go straight into our public hearing. Don't, on a donation from Sanborn Seminary Trustees. Oh, Jen? Jen, sorry, Jen. I see, I see a dollar sign and I just assumed Matt.
Right. Hi, everyone. So Jennifer Mitchison, high school principal. I believe you have a letter in your materials tonight that I sent to Mr. Ambrose a couple of weeks ago. And so I was able to meet with the Sanborn Seminary Trustees back on August eighteenth. We met here in the library. It's the yearly meeting that Sanborn has with the trustees and for those of you who are maybe new or, or just want a refresher, every year the trustees have generously donated for a number of years a lot of funds to the school for some special projects and some really cool creative opportunities for students that otherwise may or may not be possible. So we're really thankful. And so what you have in front of you is an outline of the projects that the trustees approved for the grant funding for this year. So you'll see a little description of the project, the staff members who applied for the project and then the amount that they requested and then the amount that the trustees decided on. So I'm here to answer any questions. If you want to hear a little more about any of the projects. Yes, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
When does the yellow submarine launch?
I know everyone's so excited about the submarine project. So I know that that is taking place right at the end of school. It's like days after school gets out at the end of the year. So I'm actually hoping to accompany Mr. Enright and whoever else chaperons the trip. Hopefully maybe utilizing, you know, some vans and things that we've got to help support the trip and Jim's also working with someone over at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, which is really great. So we've hooked up a lot of partnerships and I know there's Liberty Mutual's helping. There's a, there's a bunch of help already and, you know, we're excited.
Cool, thanks.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Yeah, these are some great projects. I'm really excited to hear about them.
And I love that the, on all of these that were approved, the amount requested was fully funded.
Yes, me too.
That's really, I think that's really important to note that the trustees took these very seriously and they, and they fully funded all of them. So thank you to the trustees and thank you to everyone that, you know.
And this year, Tether, to your sort of comment about to see, we're able to sort of bring back a past practice of the trustees coming in to be able to see some of these projects in action. I think with the last couple of years, you know, people coming into school or it wasn't always possible. So it's really another, you know, great part of the school year I'm looking forward to. So I'm going to coordinate with them and set up some days that they can come in and see some of these projects in action.
So I'll, I'll just take one moment to thank Ms. Mitchison for being our new principal and everything that she's done. She's done an amazing job. It's really hard to take over as a principal. But my favorite part was when she told me that she met with the trustees. And one of them hands her a list of concerns that he has about the high school and our academic achievement. And Jen looks at him and he says, we're on it. And her response was, this is what we're doing with the grading. This is what we're doing with the curriculum. I think the guy was just dumbfounded. And that just is a real testimony to what Ms. Mitchison is doing to help our students to be ready for the world that they're going to face because we're all finding out it's going to be a lot more dynamic than we planned on. So thank you. Thirty-five thousand dollars.
And so in addition to saying thank you, I just want to say that the Sanborn trustee are awesome. Yeah. Put it simply. They do this on a regular basis and this is just awesome. Thank you. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept your donation?
Second.
You have to have a option for a public comment.
I think.
Sure.
Hi, Greg Freese, Fremont.
Hey.
I just want to know what the list was.
Yes. Oh.
Oh.
We can read that. Yep.
Um, so I can go over the list. So the first is the Artist in Residence Masterclass Series, which is for the music program here. And that was Ms. Bartlett and Mr. Brad. And it's an opportunity to allow us to bring in some, you know, master musicians who have master's degrees and very specific instrumental performances and work with the students various times throughout the year. Then we have the Anatomy and Clay, which was submitted by Ms. Martin. And it's, this is probably the coolest one I thought because I had never heard of anything like this. But basically it's instead of, you know, have allowing students who are taking anatomy and physiology, you know, purchasing and having them dissect living creatures that then have to be consumed and thrown away. This is like a clay modeled, real human body-ish kind of thing. And sorry, that was really, my brain's a little, you know, at this time of day, but it, it to, to basic, to describe it in, in its essence and the, it can be reused. So like, it's not something it can, it can last over the years and kids can sort of play and manipulate and understand the human dynamics and the anatomy and then it is reused. So I thought that was really interesting and definitely a, an awesome opportunity and, you know, no more maybe squeamish things with dissecting stuff. Then the photography program at the high school has really blossomed over the years. And so now Ms. Billado will be able to have a, a digital SLR camera for every student. So she was able to get some last year through some grant, through the seminary trustees. And now she'll be able to outfit so that every student in her class can have their own camera to use during class time, which I thought was really great. Then a clay mixer for Ms. Driscoll, but it's not just any clay mixer. It essentially like recycles the clay. So again, thinking about being, you know, smart in the consumption and what we're using and what we're throwing away. It can help maintain the lifespan of clay and, and how long it's able to then be molded and reused or easy process for a student who is like, you know, I don't like this and toss it back in and sort of start from scratch. And then, of course, the human powered submarine. So that's a huge project. And the proposal is going to help, help fund a team of students to refurbish a human powered flooded submarine and they will be entering it into the international submarine races, which is going to be down in Beth, Betha, Maryland in June of twenty twenty-three. So that's really exciting. And then finally, the buzz at Sanborn. So we have a beehive here. And Megan Petrucci is the keeper of the hive and she's our beekeeper. She does a great job. She has a club, so a lot of students are involved. And so she needed at times to bring in some experts to help her. And so this allows her to continue working with some expert beekeepers. Sometimes they have to use special equipment and special, you know, treatments for the beehive to keep it going. So and those are the projects.
I, I have to say, I went to the beehive. It was, I was scared and it was actually fine, but we didn't have to wear the whole getup to just check it out, you know, it's super cool. Have you, have you gone?
I have.
Yeah, it's amazing. The beehive is super cool. I mean, the yellow submarine rocks, but we have to give the beehive a little bit of credit. It's pretty, pretty.
We joined the two projects.
No, I don't think.
Stripes on the yellow submarine.
There we go.
There's your, there's your combination, chief. Okay, so we have, did we get the motion to accept? Yes. And then Tammy seconded, correct? Did you second?
I'm good.
Jim did. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I knew I heard a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Well, sorry, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thank, thanks again to the Sanborn Seminary Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we will move on to. All right, so 7.4 contribution agreement. Matt?
Yes, our, this is for property liability insurance and Primex is asking us to enter into an agreement for the next three years that would cap the insurance premiums at seven percent year over year, based upon the prior year's actual expenditures. Okay, what I've done in my staff report is I've tried to pull together a baseline and their past cap agreement, which was nine percent and what their increases were year over year. The first year, even though it was capped at nine percent, they kept it at 6.92%. The second year, they, they kept it at 4.06% and then the third year, they, they went up to nine percent. So what Primex is, is basically it's a state pool. It's created by a state statute called, it's chapter 5B of the New Hampshire RSAs. And what it is, is all the municipalities in the state can participate in the pool. And they're sharing the risk of, of ensuring all of our activities across all the other member towns. And we're sharing it based upon a percentage of our, our list of exposures. Our list of exposures are the fair market value of all the properties that the district owns. And I believe I put the list in, in the school boards, right? I think maybe the finance committee's packet. So one of the things that I wanted to do, I was able to speak to a commercial insurance provider today. And he is willing to go through and try to give us a cost proposal, but he did say that he would like to try to talk me out of it. Because usually when they go through with this process, we end up staying with Primex. Okay, so Primex offers a lot of other programs too, including education for our employees on, on risk management, such as like chainsaw usage. The people who, who are out on the street directing traffic, they can get a certificate for that. But also significant about switching away from Primex, it would change a lot of our agreements between our member towns. Right now, because Kingston and Newton are both in Primex. If we change away to a commercial organization, we'd have to negotiate what the risk may be given upon, given to the certain circumstance at that time. Okay, so I'm recommending staying with Primex and I'm asking the school board to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
We do this annually. We do this every three years. Every three years. Thank you. That's what I wanted to. So does that lock us in at the nine percent for three years or is it? It's actually.
That's a maximum, isn't it? That nine percent?
Seeing it because it's capped at seven.
Right, right.
Right now it's capped at.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
You can give Rick that one. All right, any discussion? Great, roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick? Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, second public comment. They're all jumping up and down, ready to run up here. All right, if there is no one for public comment, we'll move on to contingency fund.
All right, um. Back in June, the school board voted to reserve two and a half percent of the net assessment of the, of the two towns and it was 537,817 dollars. As part of that vote, specifically Jamie, wanted to have to revisit it.
No, we take our.
It's up to you.
Yeah, so I, I'd raise up, when we, when we had the discussion at the meeting, we talked about it only costs $24 a household on a $400,000 house for Kingston, for example. And that, that got conflated somehow in the discussion because it's really the tax rate that Matt provided was per hundred thousand, not per the whole 537,000. So if the, if you applied those rates to the full 537,000, the actual impact on a $400,000 house for Kingston would be $134.55, not $24. And for Newton would be $148, not $24. So for a matter of transparency, I wanted to make sure that the record was clear and then revoke the contingency fund or not, whatever the board pleases, so that it's in the record for what the correct number is that's being withheld.
Yeah, it's, this really is, just for clarification purposes, so it's on record that what the actual impact is. Make a motion to, I guess, reaffirm, vote we took before or however anyone would like.
To clarify, the vote we took before was to retain the 2.5 and then the rest went back, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to reaffirm our vote with a two and a half percent with the rates that Jamie has clarified.
Second, all right, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm not going to support the motion. I supported it last time, not because it's 24 versus 148. That's kind of not a huge differential. But the more I think about it and the more I look at the situations that we are with spending, there is no checks and balances any longer. So it used to be the school board could not do what they want with this contingency. The school board needed the budget committee to concur with them. They needed the Department of Revenue to concur with them. They needed the Department of Education to concur with them and had to be an emergency. The new rules are the school board holds a public meeting and then can spend it on whatever they want with a four to three vote. No, there is no other say, there is no other check or balance. And for that reason, I'm not going to support it because I just don't think there's any checks and balances any longer. And it's, it's too, it's too ripe to be picked for spending.
I hear that point. I understand that. I think I will continue to support because I want to make sure that with everything going on with all the inflation and unknowns moving forward, I think it's important to have some money there. We did just set a board goal to be cautious in our spending. So if we need to have that money there, it'd be nice to have it there instead of going to the taxpayers and saying, please help out, we need this now. So. So. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not going to support it either because the controls that Jamie mentioned are different. It's a whole different situation than it was with previous retentions of this, this money. This money was strictly for emergencies and they had to be dire emergencies. And I supported it in that case, but now these, this money can be used for a wish list. And emergencies, but what I'm concerned about is that a, a vote of, of just the school board can authorize the spending of this funds. If, if this had to go before the public in a deliberative and the public decided whether we should spend the funds or not, then I would support it. But given how it is now, I can't support it.
So I just have a couple of questions. Could you, you say dire emergencies. I'm just curious. What, what, where, does it say dire somewhere and can somebody tell?
Those are my, those are my words.
Can you define dire for me?
I think Matt is going to chime in.
Okay, so there's actually a court case that, that really deals with like an emergency. And so if it's something that, that's anticipated, they won't allow an expenditure out of the fund. So it has to be something that wasn't a thought of during the budget cycle and that is just like extreme and unusual. Okay, so it's not like we can just use it for a wish list. It has to be like a dire need.
So we keep saying wishlist. What's, what's wishlist are we talking about?
We don't have a wishlist.
So for, for example, before what Matt just said apply. Now, if the school board says we need fine shrubberies around all of our buildings and we want to spend 537,000 on fine shrubberies, then they can have a public meeting about fine shrubberies. And after the public meeting, they can vote to spend $537,000 on fine shrubberies.
Did you vote for that?
No, but a, a school board could. There's no check or balance this time. Perhaps, perhaps not. It would be a decision next summer.
When did, I guess I want to clarify, when did this, the laws change? Cause I think this was.
Two years ago?
Yeah, it was during COVID that it changed.
Okay.
Yeah, it was fairly recent.
Cause my understanding it was for emergency.
Well, and when we, we approved last year's, and I think we talked about this in another meeting, when we approved last year's, we missed the fact of the law change because it was right around the same time. So we said last year that the old rules were in place. And then we didn't spend the money, so it didn't, it became academic because the money went back. But in fact, the old rules were not in place last year. The new rules are in place. The new rules are also in place this year.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying.
So we just spent probably 20 minutes talking about inflation, not depleting the contingency funds. Fiscally responsible, but this is the year we're going to do this. Just want to make sure that I'm clear.
This is a contingency fund.
Worst inflation in four years, but this is the year we're going to vote on this.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Matt?
I'd like to recommend delaying this vote until after we've done a budget dive. One of the things that I can do to, to make this, you know, to ensure that I can have the tax rate not set is that there's one form that I have filed. Without that form, the tax rate can't be set. So I can guarantee that we can meet at a future meeting after Tom and I have discussed it.
I, 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 I don't need to discuss it. I agree that, that this, you recommended in here that we retain this.
Yes.
I trust you.
Yeah.
We pay you to analyze our finances and to protect the community from potential issues. I believe that everyone in this room, myself included, would be a fool to spend this money unless it was a legitimate emergency. I would recommend spending the money. And if there's one piece, piece of trust I've earned is that I'm very careful with money. And I have been consistently for five years. So I, I feel completely comfortable retaining this, but I don't feel comfortable giving it back right now. Because I'm very concerned about everything that we've discussed all night. And so I'm recommending that we move forward and that we, and put this to bed. But that's based on your previous recommend, Matt's trying to accommodate y'all and I'll let them off. That's what I'm saying.
Is there still a sort of an expiration on how long this money can be held in the, it has to, in the past, it had to go back to like the following year, I believe.
So we, we've been using the practice of voting it at year end, okay? And I believe that it still talks about year end on the signed fund balance, okay? So I would keep up with the practice that at year end, it gets returned back to taxpayers if the school board doesn't vote, revote it.
So what, what she's asking though is that, so Tammy, to answer your question, I, I understood, I'll clarify. I'll do Matt translation because sometimes we have to do that. It, it, the money goes back to people at the end of next year. And if we have enough left in unextended funds, we could retain it again at the end of next year, but it's that fiscal year's money. So it does go back to the taxpayers on July 1st of next year. Right? So and, and then the only way we could retain it again is if we have the excess funds in next year, this current year's budget for the following year. So it lags one year behind. So it basically, I know it's super complicated. So, so this 537, 537,817 dollars is money left over from last year. We're saying that, that, that they give us the ability to withhold that for, for an emergency. Well, it used to say emergency. We would only use it for an emergency. I'll say that. I'll own that. An emergency, we can define and try to define, but the reality is we know when we want. Right? Like the roof at the middle school collapsing six, seven years ago, that's an emergency.
Dire.
Yeah, but you have to expend the entire local $37 million before you can touch this money.
Is that still a condition?
That's been my understanding the whole time.
That's the way it used to be. I don't know if that's still a condition.
So, so we can clarify that, but I certainly wouldn't spend it until we got there. So I'm just speaking for me as the leader of the organization. I'm not coming to y'all to spend that money until we've spent the other $37 million and that's on the record. So I, I'm just simply saying, I'm not worried. It's probably going to go back to the taxpayers. The likelihood that we're going to spend that money is very, very low, but I understand your points, Jamie. And I'm not, I'm not trying to win your vote with this either. I'm just simply saying straight up, of all the years I've worked here and I'm in my eighth year as a superintendent, this is the year I'm the most worried about the budget. That's all I'm telling you. If you don't vote to keep it, we'll cross the bridge when we get there.
Did you find anything, Matt, about restrictions on spending?
It says, uh, we can use the fund to meet costs of unanticipated expend, expenses that may arise during the year.
Okay, so it did change that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it still has to be unanticipated expenses. It can't be something that we thought about and cut out of the budget. It has to be something that is still unusual.
So for example, when the baking furnace died.
Yes.
That's, you could argue that both ways because we knew that the furnace was old.
Yes.
And we talked about it regularly.
Yes.
Is that still unanticipated? I'm just trying to use an example to give everybody a.
I don't know if that's a fair question.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, Matt, Matt.
Yeah, that, that could be like a trick question. I, I think.
Oh, I think we won't go there.
Yeah, okay.
But I think, but I, I think, I think the roof is a good example.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, the roof, the roof was a great example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we knew. Yeah.
Well, the roof was largely paid for.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. So we need to keep.
That wasn't, that's not a great example because the roof was, we, you know, the roof was insured.
Yeah.
We got.
Oh, that's a good point too.
Got most of that money back or about not.
I'm just trying to get to what would be an, an example of an unanticipated or an emergency. I was just trying to help the public.
Emergency, we wouldn't have used it to fund the track.
Exactly.
That was an emergency that was on the, the wishlist. So any of those things that we've talked about, which truthfully too, i- if it's something that's in the forefront of our minds that we really want, somebody was trying to sneak it in at the end of the year, I would think that there would have been a conversation about it. All of those things that we funded at the end of last year were all things that were brought up during budget season. And there were a lot of conversations and points that were made, but these are things we wanted to do. Some of us wanted to do and that we were kind of waiting for that day. So I don't. So. Yeah, those wouldn't have fall, fallen under that.
We, we keep saying wishlist. I just. The track was not maintained. It would have been an insurance issue. It wasn't fixed. It's used every single day, including the weekends by the town. So we reference that as upon a wishlist. That's a wish. That's, that's properly maintaining your facilities.
I guess my, my point was just, we talked about doing that.
Hundred percent.
So therefore that wouldn't have fallen under the contingency and that was just.
Yeah.
No, I, I heard wishlist mentioned earlier too.
Well, and I did about, I'm just trying to understand how we define emergency because that seemed to be the crux of the conversation, but I gave you a really bad example. I'm sorry.
We're still talking about defining and spending money that we've never spent. So what are we doing here?
Voting.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure we have a motion and a second.
Yeah. No, I was just asking if you move in the motion.
I'm ready to go. Okay.
Okay. All right. So roll call vote, Jim?
No.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
No.
Myself, yes. Maura?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. All right, great. So if anyone has anything for the next meeting agenda, please make sure to get it to Tom and I Wednesday before the meeting. And then the next Sanborn Regional, Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. And also the Budget Committee will hold their next meeting on Thursday, October 13th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. And it looks like we have to go into non-public session.
All right.
Sorry. Would someone like to bring us in? For RSA 91A, 91A, colon, three.
Thanks for coming.
To. To letter C.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Rick? Okay.
Hey Greg, thanks for showing up.
Quick.
Good to see you again. All right.
Quick break.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to set you up with that question, man.